Let's go ahead and get started. Meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. There is presence of the Forum, just barely. And this meeting has been duly called and noted as being hosted in time and manner required. We have a brief agenda today. And first on that agenda is Low Star Governance Scale 2.2, Advanced Placement Dual Credit Completion. Mr. Brown, our Executive Director of College and Career will provide this presentation. He's also going to have one of the regular Board meetings in regard to some of our targets. And we've got some good news to report to you. Mr. Brown?
Reverend Hager, Dr. Crawford and trustees, I appreciate the opportunity to share some updates in the area of AP Dual Credit. The outline, basically through the presentation, talks about the Low Star Governance Scale 2.2, specifically that deals with college readiness, AP and dual credit participation and completion. And then the CCMR criteria, just kind of a refresher reminder of where this fits into that overall college career military readiness component that we have in the Accountability System. And then dig a little bit deeper, and Dr. Crawford mentioned there's going to be some AP information shared at the regular September 17th Board meeting. So in this particular presentation, I'm going to delve a little deeper into the dual credit specifically, because that will be a component of what we'll cover on the 17th. And then look at kind of what's new this year in AP Dual Credit. So just kind of jump in, this is the actual goal that was set, I guess, two years ago now. The percentage of Tyler ISD students completing two or more advanced dual credit courses will increase by an average of at least 3% annually over the next five years. And so when the goal was set, that baseline mark, according to the Texas Academic Performance Report, was 38.8% at that time. So it was a starting point or a benchmark baseline. And then based on the 2017 TAPER report, that's the official final number that we give to pull all the information together as teams, we were at 41, excuse me, 43.5%. So that's, you can see that the target was, that we had set was 41.8. So we exceeded that by not quite 2%, but there was about 4.7% growth. And then went ahead and included the target then for this next year, and the next go-around is with that 3% growth, 44.8. So while we exceeded the first year target, we'll certainly have to continue to grow and show growth to meet the next year's target. If it's a healthy place to be, I think we're in a good place moving forward.
Mr. Brown, this is in terms of data lagging. I know some of the stuff you're accountable for, the data really lags. Is this, is this really 2017 data we're looking at?
Well, it is lagged data. And this particular goal, in that performance report, this includes all of the students in high school taking two or more, completing two or more advanced measures on that report when it comes out. So when we get, in November or December, here in a couple of months, we'll get the most updated one. But it is a full lag year behind, you're correct. So when you're talking about graduation cohorts, when we get the 2018 TAPER that we're going to get here in two months, that's going to be talking about the class of 2017. These particular numbers, however, talk about the number of students enrolled in 11th and 12th grade. This isn't just cohort data, this is particular data. It's completion, this is, this is more participation number than it is a performance number that the CCMR criteria. Because it's all about, you know, like we said, passing AP tests, earning the number, credit number of credits, actual performance things. But that is a good point, there's lag data in here. The detailed information as far as just breaking the two high schools down, early college high school, while it will be included, it is included in the data that's being shown here, because those students, when this data was released, were still assigned to John Tyler and Robert E. Lee High School. As we move forward in the TAPERS, they will, they will have their own, as they have their first graduating class this year and then moving forward. But their numbers are included, so it's all of the John Tyler and Robert E. Lee students. You can see where it was in the baseline year at John Tyler and Robert E. Lee, the growth, and I would point out specifically, there was a significant jump at John Tyler High School in this particular category from 36.6 to 46.0. Just knowing the concentrated effort that was taking place there, that's, that's good to see that reflected in this data. And then, of course, it shows the Tyler ISD number that we just spoke about earlier. And this is just once again, every time I come up here and present, I have it subbed here, but I think it's good to share it, to talk about it, to be really familiar with it, the actual criteria that affects Domain 1 and also Domain 3, so it folds over into both. But it's a full 40% of Domain 1 in the Accountability System. That students must achieve one of these, at least one, not all, but at least one. And that's meeting the TSI criteria on ACT, SAT, or the TSI assessment in math and English, both, not just one, but both of those have to be met to meet criteria one. This specific goal addresses the foundational pieces for Tenants 2 and 3. Score three or higher on an AP exam, you obviously have to have participants to be able to score on the exam, so that's what we're talking about. Number three, earn college credit for at least three hours in an English or math dual credit course. And then if it's, if it's not English or math, it needs to accumulate, accumulate at least nine hours. And that's criteria three, so obviously our dual credit numbers are supportive of that tenet. And then before, earn a TEA, prove industry-based certification, that's information that we shared in July on certifications that are taking place, not just at the CTC, but Robert E. Lee High School and John Tyler High School as well. And then the fifth one, of course, enlisting the United States armed forces in separate criteria.
A question, is there, do we have evidence that there is an increase in students enlisting or is about the same?
There hasn't been a, an honesty in the past that really hasn't been tracked, it's not that we're just now getting our handle on it, people have kept up with that, we're just now starting to do it. It's been fairly level as far as recently, but I think there's a definite, we have a definite push. As we mentioned before, we've applied for, as you're asking, I guess it's all right for me to go ahead and share this, we've applied for the Navy junior ROTC application and the National Defense Cadet Corps at Robert E. Lee to be added in next year. And it has received a letter back from the National Commander that they've received your application, they're looking at it and processing it. In my personal conversation with the Regional Commander, Hale San Antonio, I mean, you shouldn't use 100%, he said you're pretty much 100% guaranteed that that's going to be approved.
Okay.
So we'll be looking forward to be adding that to the agenda, which will, of course, support Military Sciences at Robert E. Lee, which we expect will boost those students that are looking at military options.
Mr. Brown, go back one slide.
Yes.
On number four, in the Accountability System of this year, where everybody got their A, B, C, D, A, B, C, D, or whatever, is that where the half point credit is being given for coherent sequence of courses?
Yes.
And just to let the Board, full disclosure on this, that's supposed to be considered to be going away, to where you get half a point for that coherent sequence of courses. They're just looking at it. Here we go again, one test on one day to go into it, not the actual experience. So in saying that, as a Board, I would be concerned, as an educator in Texas, as someone who spent a lot of time on House Bill 5, and a lot of money, and a lot of structure, I remember, and a lot of, yes, time, effort, and blood, sweat and tears, that something that's only six years old is going away, that was supposed to be this, this big push, this big initiative. All are familiar with House Bill 5. And so we're, we're trying to do what we can to talk to the agency and our, and I think that's something to talk to our legislators, our Chamber of Commerce, that that does not need to go away, that still needs to remain a possibility there, because not every, I mean, here we are putting so much on a, on a high stakes test, on a standardized test, the certification test, to count as everything in our, in our Accountability System. It's, that's the beauty of House Bill 5 was that it was designed to focus on the instruction and the experience. And some of these same legislators have forgotten that, some of the rule makers have forgotten that at TEA. So as you talk to constituents, as you talk to the community, as you talk to the Chamber, our representatives in the legislature, that is something we're going to really push upon for this legislative session, because it can really, even though we're taking care of our business as far as acquiring those credentials and those certifications, House Bill 5, a lot of us put a lot of work into that over the last six to eight years in developing that, and it doesn't need to go away, it's good for kids, so.
It is.
And it's, and it's something outside of high stakes testing that is, you know, this is not the all end all, there's a little glimpse of hope if we keep that half of credit in there. You can't, as we live on half the credit, you won't be higher than a B or C campus or district if that's all you worry about. So we're going to still push on certifications, but we have to have that point five, that half credit in our Accountability Structure, because it's the right thing to do for kids. So I hope that everybody will get on board.
Okay. That's a very good point. These are the actual numbers, just kind of fast forwarding, because you're right, there's lag data in what's in the TAPER, but I want to kind of talk, bring it to the present, where we are now with our students and what's been happening. So to try to compare apples to apples and then do this sequentially, comparing fall data from the past three years. So in the fall of 2016, two years ago, we had 839 students in the district enrolled that eventually, and that's students, not courses, it's actually 830, some were taking two, three or four, but that's 839 students enrolled in an advanced placement course, 315 students in the district enrolled in a dual credit course, for a total of 1,154. And then at this time last year, in September of 2017, that number had increased to 909 students in AP, taking an AP class in the district, 484 students taking a dual credit course, and then it showed 21% growth as a district to 1,393 students, you know, so it increased 239 students. Now, this year's number, I need to say this, we still have a few things, we've registered the students, these are in the system, but there's a few of them, the economically disadvantaged students do not pay tuition or do they buy their textbooks, that's part of the MOU, we cover that for them, but we, there's still outstanding tuition on a few students and a few things to clean up. So it's just where we stood as of Friday, there's a possibility where it says dual credit, 742 students, we hope it stays there and maybe even goes up. So we have new students that actually are trying to enroll in classes this week, but I just want you to know, that's not a hard and fast number, the 315 and the 484, that's from the past. But that growth is really significant, that's about 162, if you look at this current fall, of students taking AP classes and 258 dual credit students.
So that's the amount of students, not the amount of classes. In other words, it's not Gary Brown taking four different courses, it's an ass to, so Board, and Tom's is going to go over this with you in a minute about our enrollments, but 2266 at Lee right now, 2102 at John Tyler, 382 at Early College, 107 at Rise, that's a pretty good number, amount of our students that are taking these advanced courses out of that need kids, so.
And that would be on four grades, and hard for freshmen to take these.
Correct. Freshmen really don't factor into these numbers for the most part.
Yeah, we offer one freshman AP course, you and John.
I for one am proud to see, I've talked with you about it, and a district like ours should have had more students in AP and dual credit, and I sure appreciate seeing this increase in numbers.
The campus administrators, counselors and teachers really is just a strong push, appreciate all the efforts, and then we have talked, I mean collectively, in communication, how do we share it? So we're, we're working on some strategies to get some underserved, I don't want to use the word underserved, students that are not represented here to get more of those students, but certainly the numbers are showing, are showing.
Mr. Brown, go ahead and go to the next slide, just make a note, would you call Longview and Lefty, Midland Lee, Abbling, they're both Abbling, both Midlands, both Odesses, and see what their military enlistments look like, just so we can have some comparisons of what that is, so just something to strike out.
Sure.
So you're going to come back later and sometime during the year, near the end of the academic year, and show us enrollment versus completion.
There is, in the next update, we'll have, yeah, these students are just enrolled, that doesn't mean that, I'm going to talk a little bit about completion in this, in just a minute, but it could be yes. Just enrolling doesn't mean.
We usually get an update on how they, for the AP kids, how they scored on the tests. Three plus, that's nice.
And that's in September meeting, we're really going to be taking AP.
Mr. Brown, back to the ROTC, what is the projected date that that will get started, if everything is up to date?
Fall of 2019. The, right now, on the, on the choice selection that the students will have this year in October, in November, December, we're going to have an option for Military Sciences, we're not exactly sure if we're going to call it in Navy NDCC yet, if we don't get the official letter back by the end, we probably won't call it that, but we may call it as Leadership Officer Training Corps. But it's just going to give them the opportunity to sign up with the intentions of an instructor and a program on the ground in fall 2019.
And that involves a classroom experience and then an after-school experience as well?
Yes, we actually have in the designs of RRL, there's a really nice set up for Military Sciences at RRL.
To have this, I'll give you that list of schools, sorry about that.
No, it's all right, I just made a note, no, I'm kidding. This is just a graphic representation of the same thing, it just kind of showed the steady growth in the AP, and one of the questions that's always asked, we'll do a couple of questions here, is what's the difference, is one better than the other? I always say it's based on each individual student and their situation, there's not one preference. My daughter's a senior and she's taking two dual credit and two AP, so I'll speak for a parent. You need to mix and match, a hybrid is a great. And ultimately, you know, the numbers, if we have an increase in one, does it mean we're going to have a decrease in the other? There's always that concern. I think the numbers are showing us, they're bearing out, that we can show growth in both areas, and have shown growth in both areas, and that's a testament to the teachers, administrators, counselors on the campus.
You know, we're always, here's a question from parents about rankings, and does this positively impact rankings or what?
Well, certainly the additional grade points that are added for advanced academics classes, dual credit receiving additional 10 points as well as AP. So any, any of these students enrolled in these courses are receiving those additional measures.
Make that known to a lot of the parents.
Oh, yeah. Well, I would imagine.
The top is already down.
You know, there have been some school systems that have, have done some different things in regards to rankings, you know, the bow and sow, things are going away, somebody's on them because it's gotten so contentious and stressful and competitive.
Very stressful.
So.
Top 10% is just, it's truly, it's now, now towards top eight and top 7%, it's just, it's really kind of crazy level of competitiveness, it's more focused on grade, but I hope it will stay out of that.
I'm going to say college should go there, so it's going to be kind of hard for us to totally step away from it.
Well, it's certainly important, I would say this, that there are, there are some students, and I think they would tell you this, that they're taking AP and dual credit class, probably more so AP, specifically adding in four grade points, but when you look at the, the performance piece, the completion, the grades earning in the dual credit, and the AP scores, they're putting the time and effort in, it's not just taking some of the check and locks, they're actually performing well, which is a big thing.
Yeah, and in regard to AP and dual credit, you have to think about the rigor of the course, obviously extremely important, the experience, but it's also, you know, AP is another standardized test on one day, it's high stakes testing versus dual credit completion. So you really got to gauge as a parent or kid, or student, excuse me, I hate when you call it kids, I mean, as a student, what's your path's going to be, where you're going to wind up. And if you're more engaged towards a state school, mid-tier state school, or a JuCo, you may go the dual credit route because it knocks it out so much. If you're, if you're military academy bound, or if you're, if you're maybe East Coast, or you're a tier one status school, then AP's probably the way that you're going to go, because that's what your peers, that you're going to be competing back, getting into those schools are going to be taking, so. You know, I know we've got some folks in this room who've, kids have taken a lot of dual credit, but even a state school won't take that inside that major, you might can use that as a, to burn, unless you don't have to take basketball, you mean, or, or tennis, or badminton, you can replace what you took for English 1301, you put that in instead of that throwaway elective, so there's, there is, there are a lot of benefits to taking advanced placement or dual credit, it's just not a perfect, well, the receiving school's going to take that credit the way you want to take it, they'll take it, it's going to take it the way you want it.
The, just to promote, I appreciate Tyler ISD TV and the students that they work with, and how they're putting this together, but it's just a little promo that we have, sharing information on dual credit, to share with you.
What is dual credit?
Dual credit enrolls students in college courses while they're still in high school, allowing them to simultaneously earn both high school and college credit.
Can any student enroll in college courses for dual credit?
Yes, Tyler ISD and Tyler Junior College have a partnership to provide dual credit opportunities to high school students who meet the criteria for taking college classes.
I hear Tyler ISD offers a wide variety of dual credit courses.
Yes, more than 700 Tyler ISD high school students are enrolled in more than 25 academic and technical dual credit courses through Tyler Junior College.
So dual credit students leave their high school already working on their college degree? I want to get ahead.
It also means reduced college costs. Talk to your counselor about courses that interest you.
Dual credit has the power to transform me and my future.
Just, just a little promo to kind of put awareness, get it on people's mind, not a lot of specific details. This, this next piece, and like I said, I'm just predicting a report that focuses just a little bit more on dual credit and where we are in the present, on that AP information's coming in the next, late September Board meeting. This is a breakdown of the, and you mentioned courses taken versus earned credit. This is looking at last year in both semesters, so this is looking at the entirety of the 2017, 2018 school year, both semesters, fall and spring. So the Career Technology Center, and this, this is courses taken, now this is not just students, some students are taking multiple, but 577 courses taken, 559 credits that were earned, and the vast majority of these are three-hour college classes. There are a few one-hour and a few two-hour, actually there are some that are four-hour, and actually when you get to NT, there's a five-hour NT class, you get five hours of college. Most of these are three-hour college credits. For a 90, almost a 97% pass senior at Early College High School, obviously that's their focus, is getting the, the college credit as they're moving through the program, they took 1,140 college courses and earned 970 college credits, which translates times three pretty much to get the number of hours. John Tyler had 352 courses taken, 319 credits are courses that were passed at a 90.6% clip, and Robert E. Lee High School had 683 courses taken with 653 passed. And you can look across the bottom line there at the Tyler ISD number, so once again, it's not students, it's total number of courses. You can see that we've got students taking two, three and four, to look at the number that we showed earlier compared to the courses taken, but 2,752 courses, dual credit courses that were taken last year, and 2,501 credits that were, that were earned. That's, that's a lot of college credit at a very reduced rate for a lot of students.
So I'm happy to understand the Early College High School, courses taken, 1,140, earned credit 970, talk to me about that.
Well, once again, and I didn't delineate a number of college credit hours earned, some one, two, three and four, but this is just a course, any course counting one, so they had 1,100, they had students enrolled in 1,146 different classes, and of those classes that were taken by students, they had 970 earned credit. And we're using our scale on our new credit, by the way, we're using a C, we don't want a D, but a D actually is transcript that can earn credit, I did not include Ds in these numbers, so we don't want to talk about Ds, we don't like Ds, but it actually does count as a credit off a TJSE transcript. The D's numbers reflect As, Bs and Cs at TJSE.
But D counts as what?
It's considered passing, although in college.
So best standard.
Best standard, however you want to say it, but these numbers don't reflect Ds, so just know that I went ahead and bumped that up.
Get a one point on your GPA.
That is what they say.
This is kind of some new things, advanced placement, we had it several courses.
Mr. Brown, can you go back just one slide? So obviously we've got a 10-point spread in passing rates, how do you feel about the passing rates? What efforts are there to improve the passing rates?
Well, you know, in, in Early College, and I went ahead and included this information here, they really are kind of a little bit of a separate entity, because they're immersing their students at a younger age and in more courses, and you can tell by the number taken. So that's where, I think it's to be expected that you may see a little bit lower of that. Their ultimate goal is obviously, we're going to have students having an associate's degree here in May from Tyler Junior College. Please keep in mind too, that I did not include Ds on here, so that if I were to have included what TJSE considers passing, that will count towards the associate, that number would go up, that passing rate would. So how do I feel about it? I mean, I want them all to be above 90% or even approaching 100%. I think the overall 90.9% passing rate, we certainly would like to see go up, but it's a, I think it's a healthy number, shall we all just see?
What year in their high school experience do they begin taking dual credit classes?
We actually, in technical dual credit, and that's one of the things I want to show you in detail, so we have sophomores, we've got sophomores taking medical terminology earning credit in the Hill Science Field, I know that Early College has a couple of sophomore level classes, these mostly begin at the junior level, junior English, junior history, junior science.
And y'all can remember your kids as sophomores, I just had one, there, there's a lot of difference as sophomore, you're in the junior year.
Yeah.
There's a lot, I think, qualitative reasoning behind that, but there is a little spread on there, there will be adolescents in my ears.
At Early College, where you've got more.
Yeah, for sophomore level.
And even freshman courses.
Yeah.
Yes.
Of course, so Chris' son, Early College, one of any of them, Early College High School, doing great. John's son had a little tough time, so you counsel John's son out or what can you do?
And I, and not to speak for Ms. Frazier or her staff, but the support piece, and I will give some, some credit to Tyler Junior College and our staff, we want to see them be successful. Our goal is for them to take the courses and pass and be successful, and then take another course moving forward.
So John could, if they can take another course, he could take the course later.
Yes, so there, there are situations, and there will be situations this fall, that's why I said that number is fluid right now, that students will get into the course, they'll be two, three weeks in, and they'll simply say, say that my course load or workload, we've got students working jobs, we know that, and I may need to back out of that class. And we, of course, afford that opportunity to do that, but always with an understanding through counseling, we want to see you come back to that in the spring, and let's work towards that goal. So yes, there's definitely counseling involved, exploring all options, to keep students in the course first and be successful, but if the decision's made to remove, what do we need to bridge the gaps and get back in the next go-around?
And one more, before entering or taking a course, they are counseling, talking about the rigor of the course and the expectations. You know, it's not just a regular course.
They, I mean, the information is certainly shared, I think that's, you know, from the counselors and the teachers, in the course trajectories and electives, that when you go to that next level, you have, I'll just, I'll use English as an example, our sophomore English teachers are very cognizant of the opportunity that students are going to have in the next year as juniors. So throughout the sophomore year, both in cramming English and in on-level English, they're sharing the level of rigor, and here's some options, dual credit and AP for students. So they're sharing it from the teacher level, the counselor level, any information that's shared in parent meetings, you know, I'm sure there are other ways we could explain rigor, but certainly.
Yes, ma'am, they, parents and students alike are given or afforded many opportunities to attend sessions that describe what dual credits are, and how you go about that, what the course requirements are, what the expectations are. As far as if someone is not, if a student is not proficient in meeting that, those parents are communicated with, the students are communicated with, they're put on some type of probation, they're provided an opportunity to go to summer school to, on their own, on their own dime, just like it would be in college, to correct any type of deficiencies that they may have required during the first year, and if they haven't met that requirement by the end of the summer, they're not allowed to go back to Early College. Secondly, we do not allow Early College to send a student back to their comprehensive high school throughout the, throughout the semester, or throughout the year, in other words, they're starting March, I guess it's a semester, right? If, if somebody hasn't handled it, they're allowed to transfer back to the home campus at semester, or at the end of the year. And we do that because you got to protect your comprehensive campus too, Early College has some accountability that they must live by, and you also don't want to send someone in the middle of the six weeks or the middle of the semester back to the home campus, because it throws that one into a little bit of a disrepute. So we've tightened that up a lot, I think, in regard to that, when a student is not proficient, and how they can recover that, and then when they go back, when they absolutely go back to their comprehensive camps.
And these new courses, as I mentioned previously, we had several new AP courses added to the curriculum last year into the program of study, computer science, it was offered on both camps, right now we have one class at Robert E. Lee, and looking to grow and add recruiting students to add that AP computer science class into John Tyler next year, we've already kind of targeted for different suits, and another one to take this class, so that's going to be new. Several dual credit classes that are new, anatomy and physiology, it's our first really 4A in the science dual credit. Several dual credit classes that are new, anatomy and physiology, it's our first really four A in the science dual credit. Which is three years ago, all we offered is English and history. Then we moved into math, now we're bridging the gap into science. This is a four hour credit course that feeds into the associates of registered nursing degree at Tyler Junior College. So it's helping the students prepare for that, along with the medical terminology that could have, some of these students will have taken that as a sophomore and add this as a junior, along with their core, and be well on the way towards an associate's degree by the time they graduate. Business management, the two NT courses, I've got another slide to talk about that in a little more detail. Financial literacy in the business sector, health professions, and medical law and ethics. Those combined are three hours. It's a two hour course on the first one and a one hour course on the second. It's taught in Hill Science Principles and, excuse me, theory. And then pre-calc for those 2312. Had that at Robert Ely last year, added that to John Tyler. As a matter of fact, right before I was over, the math professor from John Tyler was talking to me just before that. We've got 30 kids in the dual credit math program that's grounded at John Tyler. So he's excited about that. This is just, and I just picked one of these, but this is a brand new program that we started this year, pretty excited about it. Emergency medical technician, it's going to be great for our students, it really is. We've got right now 25 Tyler ISD students, six to intravenous, this is the MOU you consider over the summer to allow these students to come in and take this course with our students. And they're going to get a full six hours of credit. They're going to have a 96-hour internship experience that will start probably in November, December. It is paid, the grant that we were able to obtain with UT Health, they will actually, the hours they're working on the ambulance and in the emergency room, that will be paid. So that's, that's specifically being funded by the grant that we received with Texas Workforce Commission and that kind. And then there's some certifications here, the ENT certification, the wilderness first responder certification, and the incident command from FEMA. The wilderness first responder is, most schools are not offering this additional certification. But this allows somebody to know, if you know that you're not going to be able to get somebody to treat medical assistance, you're out in a rural setting. This is one step above an ENT. I'm going to have to deal with the injury where I am. So we really feel like this is going to be a great bonus to add this certification for our students. We want to step up. Anyway, just wanted to highlight that program. We'll see how that's piled up in our first year. And we'll see, I will tell you this, that the six to intravenous, had a chance to speak with them and they just blended out. Can't tell, separate them from Tyler ISD kids and they welcomed them, it's been a good experience so far.
Mr. Brown, the ENT certification, that's one that does not count for state accountability purposes or?
ENT does.
It, ENT does.
That's what actually what these students need to certify has to count. That's on my head. Still questions without speaking.
Mr. Brown, thanks for your report. I appreciate you telling me Alex's success story. I had one quick question, speaking of that. So going back to courses completed, you had a broken down between John Tyler and Robert Ely. And you just skipped right over the 10% increase. Can you just talk about the efforts to do that?
At which?
At John Tyler.
Okay, which slide was that?
It was like two or three, keep going, right there.
Okay. Yeah, they're, and this is going back from over this lag day, so you can go back two years ago. Very targeted to add dual credit courses for students so they have a wider variety and to add AP courses at that time. And so that's where I think you see a large jump in the number of courses that are being taken, as well as adding new students, non-traditional students that had not been traditionally taking AP and dual credit. So I think that was an administrative and counseling push. And I know as I'm going over talking, working with teachers and sending them to trainings and getting, it just becomes, we want it to be part of the culture. We want it to be like, this is an expectation, this is the way we do things. So I think, I think you're going to see numbers continue, that's the other numbers. I think you're going to concede, you should see that number grow as it becomes more a part of the culture. This is how we do things.
Well, as a parent of a kid in middle school, I think that it starts there, right? I mean, those guys need to know about it, maybe if you're talking about it, maybe you'll be hearing about it.
I would highly appreciate you asking. I would highlight October 22nd, Your Future Is Now. That is, that's going to be all things related to, we will have a military reading this component with recruiters from the Texas State Guard and Coast Guard and Air Force. All of the recruiters there. There will be FAFSA for financial information for people to actually register for the FAFSA in that event. We'll be sharing dual credit information. And the target audience are seventh, eighth, and ninth grade students. So very much that middle school parent and student to just come see everything related to all of this, AP program, dual credit.
Give a few attaboys on that, Mr. Martinez. One, curriculum instruction and our middle school principals and the implementation of the springboard curriculum. Which is called the board approved?
Yes.
You're right. We weren't doing that five years ago. And we were just kind of calling pre-AP and pre-AP GT, you know, all that stuff that y'all heard them banter about. We didn't really have a curriculum purpose on that. And so in saying that, that's an attaboy to the CNI. You can tell that the year, 2017, is when Mr. Brown first took on his role as executive director of College and Career. And in saying that, I mean, you know, high school principals had a lot on their plate. Being a former high school principal, yes, you can try to be really good at that, but you know, as we've restructured our organizational chart, identifying someone that's going to hold the risk and making that important, you just got to target your resources where you need that to happen. So I think that's kind of been part of the redesign of ourselves. So attaboy to the curriculum instruction department and College and Career, I think has been a big push on that. But he's right, the counselors and the teachers have to buy into that. The parents have to want it. It's been a very synergistic type of thing.
Mr. Brown, in the category, and so the words are on your slide, in the category of, I'm not sure who owns it, but the district. Issue of national merit competition. So we've got SAT as part of ACT, SAT here. Is there, who would own in the district? Is it a principal, is it a near shop, is it a counselor? National merit recognition and progress on?
Yeah, I think prior to, I think it was just kind of sporadic on leading up to the campus. But it's going to reside, and once we get a true solid plan, it's going to reside on Mr. Brown. We've already, I've already asked him to look at Garland's, some of the things Garland has done to increase their national merit representations. It's really two shops, it's the CNI shop where he resides, and then the school administration. They're both very aware of Dr. Hanson's bar gold chart and Mr. Santos. So it's important enough that we're two groups of folks.
One thing to add to that, one thing we've bringing place this year is we're having all of our eighth graders take the PSAT A9, this will be the first time. So we just placed those orders last week, and that's on October 10th. So we're going to get some good data, it's going to tell us not only their proclivity on SAT moving forward, but PSAT and MSQT, which is the national merit scholarship qualifying test. So looking, identifying those students earlier, preparing them and getting information at the middle school, I think it's going to be very advantageous.
Part of that preparation is curriculum and learning experiences, maybe that you plug in for elective during the day or in after school. Those have proven very effective. So we've got stuff we're working on, we're not kind of ready to roll that out yet, but that's, it's on our radar. Because Garland's got a good model of going from a limited group of kids that were just kind of naturally inclined to be able to perform as national merits into a strategy.
It's something you and I have talked about in the past. It's something that parents used to always take care of themselves. And what we now know with demographics of Tyler ISD and changing parents, something that they don't always, quote unquote, take care of. And so to the extent that we can be good partners, help kids understand how to be successful there. I mentioned that Dr. Crawford, the service academies have a similar thing for Rhodes scholarships. And they way, way, way outperform Stivers, Harvards, Princeton's because they identify the kids who they think should be competing, and they mentor them and counsel them, put them through a specific program. So I think we should be doing something like that for high potential kids. Because we know that outside of school ratings, we know the parents care about national merit recognition, you know, recognition for kids. And it opens up all sorts of financial opportunities for them automatically without even really complying for them. So, yeah, it'd be good for our kids if we did a better job there.
Yeah, 10 years, I mean, I think we can put together a pretty good little program. 10 years ago, when I served as a high school principal, District West of us, that has a lot of resources, they had what was called the academic success program. And what they did was they hired a, an Ivy League educated individual, some of those are national merits, that actually came and served as a counselor to take a group of students to that next level. And so we can certainly look at budgetary things and down the road and targets and our resources towards that. But there's some models out there that we need to follow, and we're aware of it.
And our elementary people covering the hands of the back?
Yeah, I think that if we really want to true align top to bottom, bottom to top GT experience that develops those national merits, we have to look at whether or not our GT is just a bumper sticker program or a window of ECU program, y'all heard me say that, or if it's legitimate. And, you know, again, that gets into school choice, so we want to look at some innovative opportunities where we have STEM, STEM is early as elementary schools.
Why not?
I'm there, we can only bite off as much as we can. That's in the future. Pathfinder 2.0. So we're, hey, it's on our radar, and I'm hoping we'll get to it sooner rather than later. Next item on the agenda is enrollment update. And y'all asked questions the first couple, three weeks of school about what enrollments look like. And we thought we'd have Mr. Bjork here today to kind of present where we're at. We'll wind up going in October, November as far as the 22 to 1, how it's going. I will tell you that right now, we're only 55 students away district wide as far as meeting the 22 to 1.
Forty-five.
Excuse me, 45 right now, meeting the 22 to 1. And just to give you a little bit of a snapshot today, if we were to say, okay, by golly, we've got to get enough teachers deployed to 100% meet that today without the other resources that we have, it costs us, you got like $1.5 million to ensure that 22 to 1. So we've been able to kind of, year to year, meet that. Some years we don't, some years we do. We'll be able to give you a better indication in October, November, once the enrollments have settled down. But today, we were saying, we're going to write a check to cover that cost of $8.5 million. And it's just, I don't know, it's 45 students. Yeah. So we've got other strategies where the.
It's 29 classrooms.
29 classrooms total?
And so it's about one and a half.
Yeah. So that's a very expensive constraint to have, but at the same time, it's an important constraint. And we'll keep doing the best we can to meet that. So we have actually deployed a teacher day in that classroom if they are above, as far as to pair with a certified teacher. If you were to get all certified teachers, that would again be $1.5 million.
Anyhow, comment you can share with us about the drop in numbers particularly at Bell Dixie. Caldwell, I know the name for Caldwell and Jack.
Well, the strategy on Dixie, because they were about the same size as Jack whenever we, when we redrew the boundaries. And so that's, you know.
I worked out what you wanted.
Absolutely. If you look at Jack, do we have this?
You have it.
Okay. Not a young man, you know, I don't.
Didn't say you did.
I used to, back in the day, I had really cut the side. But if you go from the bottom, Jack Woods Rice, Orr, Owens, Dixie, and Griffin. You know, if we're around, if we're around 700, you know, those buildings were built for eight, eight fifty, eight twenty-five, eight fifty. But that's what we try to do is give us a balanced headroom at the schools that appropriate for their capacity. And I think we've accomplished that. Bell is a little light, as you can see, but that kind of speaks to what we were fighting with at Clarkston on the, I guess, the aging of our, of our population on the east side of the school system. Also at Bell, you had those fingers, those pockets of the DSA board that were buzzing kids to Bell as well. So those are now going to Griffin. Maybe one thing that we, if we could go back and redo it, and this might be something we reconsider is, we were so dedicated to making sure we had big roads instead of the pockets and the gerrymandering that used to occur, that we might have probably could have sent some more of those kiddos that are assigned to Griffin right now than Douglas. As you can see, Douglas is one of the bigger schools, same size, capacity as Jack, as Woods, as Orr. We could have sent them there. As Griffin, Griffin can hold six, or 800, 850 kids if we needed to, but if they don't want them. So that's, that's the reason why I wrote Mason and Ely. It's kind of a comprehensive thing. Bell is probably more affected by the DSA order redraw than anything else.
So with that availability of space, what are we doing? Are we adding maybe Head Start classes or what are we doing?
Well, that's a good idea. Two things, for one, and I don't know if this is going to happen in legislative session or not, I spoke with the, or I was at a meeting with the commissioner yesterday. And they're looking at fully funding pre-TEK. And if that happens, I think that's going to really be a game changer for, not only instead of Texas, but Tyler ISD, for qualifiers. So I don't know about putting Head Start in there. You know, Head Start only allocates us what we are qualified to as far as our school system goes, a formula there. We have talked about possibility of shifting some bilingual classes from, from maybe a campus that might have some over, not overage, but I guess overages in bilingual. But you know, we did that a few years ago, we moved Caldwell bilingual away from Caldwell to Bonner. So that's not usually a popular thing when we move those bilingual classes to go kind of fill up a school. But that might be a strategy we have to deploy to balance out the enrollments. Leveling has occurred. I don't know how many teachers we actually moved around, but we moved eight teachers this year, seven or eight teachers this year. We have, we, you know, that's a delicate thing. Because you start the school year off with Ms. Mason being your teacher, and then all of a sudden, Ms. Mason is no longer your teacher. You're now combined with Mr. Martinez's class, and Ms. Mason has now gone on to another school. That's a, that's a sad, necessary reality when you're trying to manage your, your resources appropriately. In a school system our size, you're going to do that. We have not done a whole lot of that because, one, we're pretty stable and been able to project our budgets and our staffing after 50 years of the same attendance zones. So we're going through a little bit of a period right now that where we're having to make some adjustments. And I cannot promise you that next year will be different. It'll give us two or three years of good data to see where those pockets are located, where we can effectively budget better.
Were you expecting that drop at the Caldwell School? That be the drop?
Well, remember, that's a magnet. That's a good, that's a good point. And, you know, the, Mr. Markle was projecting that his enrollment was going to be at, at that. But it's a choice program. But remember, we're also growing into having middle school grads there. So that KA experience will wind up having about 600 kids before it's over.
Coach Crawford would, just one month into the school year, would you characterize the realignment of the attendance zones last year as successful in terms of accomplishing what we had hoped would be accomplished?
Yeah, and I think that some of the things that we thought would happen, happened. I think if you look at our high schools, they're balanced, and it looks like they're projected to continue to be balanced. And I think that was one, a top priority as we were going into this, was to make sure that we didn't, you know, get out of balance there. More, for instance, carrying 1,130 kids right now, that'll level back down towards the 900s before it's over because we grandfathered some kids that were there as we were trying to redesign what the map would look like. to redesign what the man looked like. And then some of the students that were actually supposed to go to Hubbard as well. Hubbard's not as high as I thought it would be, but it's about what it needs to be. So I think it's been successful. Transportation, everybody, that's been well documented, the first week or so of the school system. But there was also some things, I think, that we were doing that got exposed that probably we need to consider. One being the request of transportation all the way up to the day before school started. Yeah, I didn't realize we were doing that, that we were leaving our system open until the Friday, all the way through the weekend before school started. So when we got a rush of 1,000.
What did you say, 800?
800 transportation requests the Friday before we started school and Monday, put us in a bind. So maybe we shut that window off to give us a little cushion, to catch our breath before school actually starts and open it back up. So that probably was also due to the fact that all people got their letters saying they were going to go to another school. They may not have thought that that was actually going to happen, because we did have some campuses where the parents came in, they said, I got this letter back in April, or March, whenever we sent them out, I've been holding on to this, thinking that you're just going to take me back in, didn't happen, so.
Is there maybe something, of course, hopefully that next year won't even be like this year, like beginning of this year, even though we had great stock, we had some challenges, that when you know you have a certain population, say 200 or 300, you haven't heard from them, that someone could begin making telephone calls and following up or?
I don't know about 200 or 300, I don't know where that, where that was.
Just making the math.
Okay, yeah, that's a bind.
Going out of number.
I hope that we didn't have 200. Yeah, and what's strange is that some of the pockets where we had some challenges, on our end, yes, we've traditionally run buses there, so why didn't we do that? But at the same time, those constituents also had asked for transportation up to that point, I think there was a, I think there's a lot of accountability there on arranging transportation for my own kids, and at the same time, make sure that's going to happen the first day of school, and at the same time, the district taking on accountability for that too. So yeah, it won't happen like this again next year, because we'll know better. There were some other logistical things that we could certainly improve upon, that'll be better next year. But again, one of those is making sure that we can catch our breath, because we did not catch our breath in transportation until last week, the back end of last week. And a lot of that was due to the fact that we had that rush of 1,300 transportation requests the day before school started and the day school started. I know I'm arranging my parent, my children's transportation opportunities well ahead of events, and I think a lot of folks has kind of got caught off guard that way, and then caught us to where we couldn't, we couldn't drink the water out of the water can anymore with groundings, so.
Is the registration requirement in any way related to this issue as well? Seems like there, every year we struggle with convincing parents that they're supposed to re-register for school every year. Is that, is part of that process then tied to a transportation request as well?
There is a transportation request button that folks can click, fill out and click on the registration, absolutely.
Do we know kind of how we do throughout the summer in terms of the percentage of folks we think are going to register, who registered throughout the summer? Or is that also a week before school starts kind of mad rush to get everybody registered?
I will tell you that I registered my own children two weeks before school started. I kept telling myself to do it, but I did it two weeks before school started. So I think every parent is busy in that, so as far as reminders go, we do the registration fair at CTC, when is that?
We have two different ones, we have one in July and we have one in August.
Yes, we have two different ones. Public is publishing.
In a different time?
We don't have much of a transient or mobile population, so I just, again, maybe we can promote it better, maybe that's what we'll start doing.
I know some principals take it upon themselves, they know that, I know like Georgiana this year, there was going to be a crazy year, so she tried to get everyone to register so they know how many kids they're going to have.
Yeah, I know Claude at Moore was, he's kind of on top of that as well. It sounds like the Crawford house and the Hager house have a lot in common. We had a conversation at my house about whether or not it was a requirement, and I was insisting that no, it actually was a requirement. And so I think we registered ours after meeting a teacher.
Oh, okay. So.
Nice.
So, did you guys have a teacher?
Yeah, they were in a class, they were signed in a class, but you got the little side saying.
Yeah, I think this has been things here. Yeah. Oh, I think Tony, Jack told me.
So I, you know, I know that is something that parents were not unique in that, and there is some question as to what has to be done every year. If you haven't moved, you haven't changed schools, but yes, you still live in the west.
Yeah, and the good thing is, is on our registration process is, is that now you just kind of have to just, if nothing's changed, you just kind of move through the process and submit. Whereas in the past, when we were doing all paper registration, you filled out new paper every single year. So there's been some improvements made there, we can continue to improve, advertise, communicate to remind folks.
The one thing you did have to enter was doctor contact information, even if that was unchanged, that was, I think, the only one that Jan had actually, he had new numbers.
Anything else, Tasha, you want to bring the board's attention in regard to?
I have pretty much all of it, other than since Tuesday we added 40 more kids.
Really? I wouldn't have added a lot. Yeah, so we're at 1870 something right now?
Eighteen sixty-three.
Eighteen sixty-three.
Do we think the earlier start had something to do with kind of some of our challenges around here in terms of enrollment and transportation?
I think so. Everyone, everyone used to start in the last Monday, August, because of state law, because of district innovation, we had to bump it up a week in advance, and you know, we're closer now to our charter and private peers, and so maybe Smith County can kind of get on the same schedule now. So we'll do a better job next year promoting when school starts, get your registration in, and make sure that transportation is, is up and running and has that at the ready. I will say this, we still need bus drivers. I know some of the board has helped us in advertising that on Facebook, but man, it is, every superintendent I've talked to, you can pay bus drivers $50 an hour, they're having a hard time competing with truck drivers, because that's usually who'll drive for you whenever the economy's bad, but the economy is booming right now. Bus drivers only paid for when they're driving, and truck drivers get paid for driving, they drive eight, 10-hour, 12-hour shifts. So we're all fighting for the same people, us and Bullard and Lyndale and Chapeldale and Brown.
What's the minimum age of a bus driver?
Minimum age? I don't know if I have that data.
Is there a minimum age?
I have that CDL.
Oh, you, I thought you meant the?
16-year.
Sure. Marvin Button Crawford drove in 1955 as a sophomore in Guthrie Public School.
I'm just curious, because I was going, I was tempted, attempting to talk to some college students, and I wasn't sure. There are some students who have like certain days, or very light days, certain days are heavy days for schedules, and I just didn't know, did you even consider recruiting?
There should be, get that CDL.
And we'll, we'll serve on them.
Yeah, we'll serve on them.
We'll get them, we'll get the training, they've got to pass the test.
You've got to college training, you know.
Well, there's some other training, we are talking to some other school systems, they're having the same, Round Rock's having a heck of a time right now. And Round Rock, of all people, you'd think that they'd be able to stock it. So they're going around talking to restaurants and the cooks that are in the restaurants, especially the bilingual ones, to maybe get them to sign up to either drive a morning or an afternoon shift whenever they're not, they're not cooking. So they're looking at those, those industries that maybe have part-time employment, see if they can plug, we can plug in a gap somewhere, that's our strategy right now.
Any suggestions?
Yeah, I mean, certain. Sure.
You make me shake my shoulders.
In terms of teacher positions, how are we doing on staffing?
We got our vacancies down low, we've had some resignations at the first part of the year. Yeah, oh, yeah. So I don't know, how many vacancies we have here right now?
Yeah, we're amping and flowing around six right now, six teacher vacancies.
How many high schools?
Probably five or six.
Are they spread across both, all three schools, or are they concentrated?
More concentrated than one, but it's spread, it's not all one, but you know, it's, I'd say 80%, 820.
So how many do you say, six? Four at one place or something?
Look at that math.
I'm BCO. Hey, hey.
But we're much better.
But I'm going to tell you, that's a, that is a 75% improvement over last year, John Dollar. We carried 12 last year or so. Now, we've had some recent, we've had, out of those six, did you say, Evan and Floyd?
Yes.
How many of those actually started the school year with us and then checked it in?
Well, we had one truly checked it in.
That's one?
Yes.
Okay.
And then.
Three?
Yeah.
Three, half.
So half of those vacancies, board, we have.
Previously filled, and they became vacant for whatever reason. Well, I ask only because I've seen several Facebook posts from former administrators here at Tyler ISD recruiting for teachers right now in surrounding districts, so.
Well, this is, yeah, to be honest, and that's one of, that's one of the push on these, the conversation about salary statewide, and that's why you're getting all these, the lieutenant governor and the governor starting to talk about some of that. I think the higher ed's putting 6,000 certified teachers out every year, and at any given moment, 30 to 35,000 teachers, they have that many vacancies statewide. So you know, the teacher organizations, TSTA, TCTA, ATV, NEA, UVA, whatever you want to call them, don't like all cert, so what are you going to do? I mean, you know, you've got to find, so we're all struggling to find that, and a lot, there's a lot of factors at that, there's salary, the economy's pretty good elsewhere, and that gum, we've just been hammering away at teachers, educators. So all we do is hammer away at it, and don't talk about the great things we're doing. Here's my plug again, you know, 38 in the nation in funding, and the top five in graduation rates amongst all the different demographics. It's a pretty good term of investment, so why are we not championing our public education system, our teachers are the ones who are doing it, so.
Okay, anything else on this? None? Next on the agenda is executive session. All right. Let's see, okay, we are back in regular session. Coming out of executive session, we have one action item for the board to consider. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the settlement action on Campos versus Tyler ISD.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, do I have a second?
Second, please.
Thank you, Ms. Washington, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. That concludes our agenda for today, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
Mr. President, I'm willing to adjourn.
Thank you, Reverend Mason, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Nation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Stand adjourned. Thank you very much.